At six o'clock and the meeting's being held at the Addison Township offices. If we could all stand for the pledge, please. Joel, you're our veteran.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please stay standing.
Thank you, God, for this wonderful day. Thank you for blessing our township with prosperity. Bless it in the future. Bless us throughout this entire year. Help us to make wise decisions. In God's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, just got a message from her. I think she won't be here. I hope you have the days mixed up. Okay, can we have roll call, please?
Eric Cent.
Here.
Lynn DeGarek. Joe King.
Here.
Jacob Newby.
Here.
Lori Fisher.
Here.
Bennett, present. Supervisor Pearson.
Here. Okay. Any announcements?
No.
Department reports as usual available in my office if anybody would like them. Come in and contact myself or Jamie. Petitions?
Yes, we received a petition as an agenda request from Robert Canass and Mr. O'Keefe for two items, driveway and parking pad on the right-of-way of Cantley Road and number two FOIA requests for documents related to the court of ordinance violations and fees.
Okay, I did contact our legal, Mr. Davis, concerning all of this. And I thank Mr. Canass for bringing us to our attention. Mr. Davis advises us that the township has no legal response, cannot respond, and we have no authority to act on the actual right-of-way of the road commission. But I just don't have the authority to do it. And as far as the FOIA, the FOIA is a normal FOIA. The only exception would be if there was a poverty level or something like that. But on the FOIA, if you thought, if somebody thought that the prices were outrageous or whatever, weren't current or whatever, then they could appeal on that. But our legal department said that this is a normal FOIA that would be handled as a normal FOIA. And there was an estimate that was sent out ahead of time as to how much it would cost. And the actual estimate was, I believe, somewhere around eighty dollars, eighty-five dollars, and the actual total came to one hundred and five with all of the copies and everything. So I just wanted to let the board know that, that we have no authority and as property rights are all handled in Circuit Court. I have no authority to handle that either. And I can't handle the road right-of-way. Now, I have some paperwork to everybody, you know, to the road commission, to tell them to go down there. I think they were down there again this week. And as far as any property disputes has to be handled, that's Circuit Court. So I would just ask that if we can't handle that, then I'd ask for a motion to move on with the agenda approval. Can I address that? These things can be addressed in public forum, yes.
Excuse me? I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Was that the motion you're looking for?
I'm looking for a motion to move on. Our legal has told us that we have no authority on any of these petitions. This would have to be, I'm explaining that these would have to go to Circuit Court and they have to go to the road commission. We have no jurisdiction on any of these.
I'll second.
And a further discussion by the board. Jacob, we have roll call now, please.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Eric Cent.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to approval of the agenda.
The consent agenda is before the board on the minutes for January thirteenth. Bills is paid. Employee policy longevity clarification with, or an amendment. Way the purchasing ordinance as there's no benefit for professional service for township insurance and authorized to renew with MMRMA insurance for 2021 coverage for fifty-two thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars. It'll come from general fund and please note it will also be dispersed to the fire department as well. If you could include that in a motion, that it's general fund and fire department.
Okay, any discussions or motion in order?
I'll move. We accept the consent agenda with the addition of the fire department contributing to the MMRMA.
Perfect. Thank you, Joe.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Not hearing any. Can we have roll call, please?
Joe King.
Aye.
Jacob Newby.
Aye.
Eric Cent.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Okay. Move on to item number two, which is a public hearing resolution for H. Eddie Drive, a private road SAD. Public hearing and resolution for H. Eddie, private road SAD. The township board received petitions signed by more than fifty percent of the record owners based on the tax rules of Oakland County constituting more than fifty percent of the total frontage of the proposed SAD requesting the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars per parcel for each of the next five years, winter tax 2020 through winter tax 2024, for the purpose of maintenance, including snow removal, grading, chloride, gravel, with a five percent collection fee for the township. And whereas proper notice of the hearing has been published in the Oxford Leader on January twenty-ninth, 2020, and February fifth, 2020, and mail by first-class mail to each property owner within the proposed SAD. And the office of the supervisor verified and determined the petition for H. Eddie Drive SAD is properly signed by the requested record owners. This is where the board listens and they open up the hearing. This is a hearing for the SAD for H. Eddie Drive. We'll open up the hearing at, we'll call it six oh seven. If anybody would like to speak on the actual SAD for H. Eddie Drive, please look forward to the podium. If anybody would like to speak on the proposed SAD. Not hearing any. We'll close the hearing at six oh eight. Would the board like to accept the SAD as requested by the resident? If so, motion's in order.
I'll move the resolution authorizing an SAD for H. Eddie Drive, a private road in Addison Township.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? Can we have roll call now, please?
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lori Fisher.
Yes.
Joe King.
Aye.
Eric Cent.
Yes.
Bennett, yes. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes, resolution shall move. Okay, move on to item number three. This is the public hearings, truth and taxation, and the budget public hearing. We'll start with the first one, which is the truth and taxation. The township rate shall not exceed the following millages. I'm going to read the millages. This is from the L. four oh two nine. And this is where we listen, first of all, to your comments. And we'll open up the public hearing. We'll call that one at six oh nine. I'm going to read the actual millages here. General operating not to exceed one point oh three oh seven. The police not to exceed three point four seven nine three. The fire capital not to exceed point seven three four one. And the fire operating not to exceed two point two four four eight.
We have NODA as well, please.
Oh, NODA. Sorry, I have that at the bottom there. NODA, which is not to exceed point two four one three. And the public hearing is open at this time. If anybody would like to speak on behalf of the truth and taxation, please come forward. If anybody would like to speak on the truth and taxation. Not hearing any. We will close the meeting at six ten. No action at this time. The second part of this is now we're in the public hearing on the proposed 2021 budget. This is where we listen to your comments about the budget. And I'd like to open the hearing. We'll call this at six eleven. If anybody would like to speak on the budget, please come forward. I'll ask one more time if anybody would like to speak on the budget. Please come forward. Not hearing any, then I'd like to close the hearing at six twelve. And we'll consider the budget later in this agenda and we'll be adopting the budget in March. This is a budget review session. We've gone through this several times now on the budget, and so I'm just going to go through by the departments now. If anybody has any, on the board has any questions, please let me know. We'll start out with the general fund. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add about the general fund? We've gone through them page by page before. Now we're at the finish. If anybody has anything, please let me know. Not hearing any. How about the fire department? We'll go on to the fire department budget. Does anybody have any recommendations or anything they would like to add on that? Not hearing any. Move on to the police department or the sheriff's office. Does anybody have anything on the sheriff's budget at all? As I said, we've gone through this for the last several months now, and this is the final until March. Anybody have anything else?
Nope.
How about the last one, which would be the parks division? If anybody have anything they would like to add about the parks budget? Okay. I think we've gone through the budget pretty well. I think we have that under control. Next month, we'll have a resolution adopting the budget then. And March is when we adopt our budget. April first is the beginning of our budget. Okay. Move on to public forum now. If anybody would like to speak in public forum, come right forward, just state your name and tell us what you'd like to hear. This is where we listen.
Well, I just respectfully disagree with your statement about not having any authority. There is clearly township ordinance violations with this parking and driveway. First of all, the township has ordinance in the home code, twenty-six point four. There's a five-foot setback required from both the road and side locks. In addition, it requires that you place this on deeded property, the property you actually own, not a public right-of-way. You're confusing the issue. The fact that if he were to build it on my property, it would be red tape. What would make it any different that you built into a public right-of-way? That just makes it more egregious. That makes it more of an immediate concern for you to intervene. I'm going to read your statement. This is just unlawful appropriation of both private property and public lands, okay? It's a violation of your local township ordinance code as well as the road commission. That's what makes this complicated. You have local ordinances, you have road commission regulations, and he violated appropriation of private property. There's three separate issues here. How in the world can you take one at a time or take it separately? It does not give you the whole picture. There was never any permits pulled for this before construction from the road commission or from the township. This is why I'm here. Contrary to the conclusions of the attorney, Mr. Low, a building official, this guy at three sixty Cantley clearly, clearly violated many, many ordinances. This matter is not solely a private civil matter. It's not solely a road commission issue, and it's not solely a local township issue. Two is this project, this driveway parking pad at three sixty, did this without prior stating a state land survey was never done. He never obtained permits from the township here or the road commission, and he diverted water that only ran down that way, down my road. It eventually came into my driveway. In addition, he covered a road survey marker that was on my southeast corner because he encroached over my property unknowingly, granted, but nonetheless did that. And he never had proper setbacks. Now, how in the world could he not be a local township issue? He never went and got a permit or got any relief for his attorney board of appeals, which he would have been required. And that's sort of what I'm asking you to do. So there's private trespass issues, okay? Setback issues of five feet that are in there. He's put this on public land, not his own deeded property, which is in your ordinance as well. No permit obtained from the township board, the road commission. He illegally parks in it. It's an old parking street and he parks. It's a pad that's over twenty feet wide so he can park and still drive through his driveway and it's right in front of my home. I can't park in front of my driveway, but he does every day. He puts his garbage out there. That's out there for weeks. And like I said, he covered a survey marker, which is actually against the law, I'm issuing here. That's a civil citation as well. We're actually a misdemeanor criminal citation myself. So basically what I'm trying to say is a joint landowner's, you know, our expected-use property reasonably without duly interfering with the rights of owners of contiguous land, okay? Actions taken by a landlord that appropriates adjoining property, which is mine or public land as well, substantially deprives any adjoining owner, which would be me and my neighbor at three fifty-seven, reasonable enjoyment of our property and its unlawful use of his own property. If landlord does not have the right to relieve his own property, in this case, not having enough space because he can't park his cars and so he can park them out on the driveway. He doesn't have that right. His right is just to ingress, egress through there, period. And so, you know, I was hoping you'd have some questions for me. I supplied you a, you know, twelve, thirteen-page list of surveys, photographs. I was hoping you were going to review it and go through this a little bit more intelligently than what we did, but if you have any questions, certainly be more handy to answer them.
Public forum, this is where we listen and then, okay, we respond back and forth.
Daryl, would you like to say something?
Yeah. I live across the street. I'm Daryl O'Keefe. I live at three fifty-seven Cantley, right across the street from Duane Trex.
Three fifty-seven, he's at three sixty, I'm at three sixty, ain't he?
Yeah. I've brought this issue up with Inspector Duck several times. I mean, he's claiming the easement. I bought a piece of property and I paid taxes for a Lakeview lot. He's planted a bunch of our providees to block. I've had problems with him since the day I stepped foot on that lot to purchase it. He came out and told me it didn't perk. It'd been for sale for thirty years. Anyway, so I buy the lot and he's planted a bunch of trees in the easement. He's curved up his driveway. So now, I'm a city Detroit building inspector. I know about surveys and grades and things like that. His property, his driveway is curved up. His pavement that goes probably two-thirds to three-quarters of the way out into that easement. It's curved up about a foot. And so all that water that used to kind of trickle down his driveway, if you go maybe next week when all the snow and ice is gone, you'll see a rut in the road that cuts right down the road and turns into his driveway. My question is, is the easement a free-for-all? Can I gate it? Because my property line takes up a lot of that easement that also, my actual property line, not the easement line, my property line, I could choke off the other neighbor, and I don't want to do that, you know? But the sheriff told me that, because I have come home and not been able to drive up into my driveway because of all the cars parked in his yard, especially during the summer when he has parties. You know, what if my house caught a fire? And the fire department couldn't get up in front of my house? You know? I think that might be an issue. And I've talked to the sheriff, and the sheriff told me that he'd come out, if they're parked in that easement, he would come out and take it to cut it because it's illegal to park in that easement. So I, my question is, is the easement a free-for-all? Can I do whatever I want in that easement? Because it seems like you guys don't care what he does in the easement. He's planting trees in the easement, blocking my view. He's pouring, he's extending his driveway two-thirds into the easement. He's taken two-thirds of the easement, blocking my entry. So you said this is a forum and you're listening to what we're saying. When am I going to have any? Are you just going to listen or is, what's going on here?
That's what public forum is. We listen. We don't, we're not going to talk back and forth. We listen to your complaint.
All right. Is there, do you sit on this for two weeks and review it and come back and say, you know, what's the next step? When do I find out if I can pave that whole easement and claim it?
What I can tell you is I will send this all to the appropriate people who own the actual thing. That's all I can tell you right now, okay? Our attorney said we don't own that property. We don't have the jurisdiction. The jurisdiction, like I said, is with Oakland County Road Commission. They actually own that. Back in nineteen thirties, the county turned over all roads to the road commission.
Right.
During the depression, when townships couldn't take care of the roads, the county had to take them over. And the county actually owns the right-of-way on that road. And I've turned it over to them. I've had contact with them. I sent somebody out. I've done everything I can do. We have no jurisdiction. You're asking us to do something we can't do because we don't have the jurisdiction. I have contacted the proper jurisdiction.
What was the, what was the issue with?
Well, that's as much as, you can talk, but I'm not going to keep, you know, it's not.
You know, I, there's just been, I had an email from someone from the road commission. I forget her name right now.
Subar.
Subar Baka, I think it was. She claimed that the, that easement was deeded over to Addison Township. I had the email from her and I've actually forwarded that to Doug, you know, when it came to the tree.
That was attempted way back in the nineteen eighties and it never was. The township wouldn't accept it. That would create a landlocked piece of property, so we couldn't do that.
Okay. Yeah, so can I comment on that? I know something wrong.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to, you're asking me and I'm being very generous. I'm just trying to explain something. If you'd like to meet in my office, you're more than welcome to come into my office. I understand what your situation is. And I'll give you to the proper people who have jurisdiction over that, but you're asking us to do something that we can't do even if we wanted to. But I can give you the right people to go talk to.
Can I just clarify, are you saying the township ordinances here, which I'm appealing to, that you have no jurisdiction with this? I don't see how that can be, Bruce, because if you put a driveway, you're required to get a township permit, okay? You're required.
We do not give out, we do not give out permits for driveways in those township. The road commission does.
But if you're putting in a parking pad or putting, so you still have to, you have, it's in your own ordinance. I'm confused.
We do not give out parking, a driveway permit, so, okay? But that's, now, if you have anything else, please tell us or come see me.
Yeah. I think I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else?
My name is Rich Barrosh and this is my wife, Kathy. We've been residents of Addison Township for twenty years and we love it out here. We're active participants in our neighborhood. But recently we ran into a situation where we put a small shed up on our property and it's twelve by eighteen feet, one hundred ninety-eight, or twelve by eighteen, one hundred ninety-eight square feet.
Twelve by sixteen.
What's it?
Twelve by sixteen.
Okay, twelve by sixteen, one hundred ninety-eight square feet. And we just couldn't believe the exorbitant cost to get a permit. It sounds like some people here haven't got permits, but, you know, we did the right thing, went in and, you know, applied for a permit, but it was exorbitant. It was, you know, six hundred seventy-five dollars for a small shed. And then we couldn't understand why it also took, you know, six inspections for this shed as well, too. This is a small building. It's not a house. We had a house that burned down on our street and I'm not sure how many inspections they had there. But six inspections for such a small building is exorbitant. This is a well-built shed, you know, with siding and it's well-roofed. Our neighbors even called it cute. In fact, Doug, when he came out on his last visit, said it was real well-built. The other concern over and above the, you know, duration of the cost and the six inspections was it took two months for the approval of the permit. I mean, that was ridiculous. We put it in in September, very early September, and it took till very early November, actually eight weeks to get it approved. Well, then we were running against weather conditions and, I mean, we were lucky that the weather was mild this year, so we were able to get the shed built. And we had some workers, decent work on it during, you know, cold conditions, which, you know, we were really happy that was done. But, I mean, those are the three main things. So it seems like the cost is, you know, very exorbitant. A friend of ours, Dave Coliday, had this full barn down. It took two weeks to get that approved. And he's got a thirty by fifty full barn, thousand dollars. You know, we could put four or five of our sheds in a building of that nature. So I don't know if the duration, if Doug needs extra help, if he needs someone part-time to work out to help it. Because we kept getting back, well, we'll be back in a couple of days. You're number three on the list. Well, it took, you know, multiple weeks for us to go from number three to number one. And, you know, I understand houses take priority, but you'd think you could sneak in a shed, you know, in a small approval. So those, you know, are our main concerns. And we did ask Jamie to have a meeting with you, Bruce, so we can go through this in more detail, but that was never said.
You can come in and see me anytime, you know? Just call and ask if I'm in and I'll be in. And if you would like to go over, we'll go over your package there and see what actually transpired if you'd like. And I'll just comment that, yes, we're in a building boom. We got an awful lot of stuff and we only have limited services. They're part-time building officials and things do get backed up. We, the last two years, we've had an extreme building boom out here and it's awfully big houses. And it doesn't take one day to go through the plans. It is frustrating for us, too. But some of these houses are so big that they take two, three days to get through the plans before they can even get a permit and then everybody else is waiting. And we apologize for that, but that's the nature of the beast when you have an awful lot of places being built at the same time. But if you'd like to come in and meet with me, that would be great and we'll go through the file.
Okay, we'd like to talk through more detail. What about the cost? I mean, that seems exorbitant.
We'll go through the file with you.
Yeah, because we did reach out to Oakland County and they said a permit is not necessary if the structure is under two hundred square foot. And we reached out to several townships and they all said the same thing. Why do you even, why are they even requiring a permit?
Well, we do have an ordinance on sheds, okay? But like I said, that's something that if you come in, we'll open up the file, we'll look at it. Thank you.
That's all we asked for originally, and since we never received the meeting, we figured, well, you know, we'll show up with the board. But otherwise, we're real happy here. Like I said, love it Addison Township and it's been great living here, but that was, you know, an unfortunate situation. And where our shed is, it's not even visible. It was approved by our board, approved by our next-door neighbors. Like I said, one said, "Looks cute." It's not funny for a shed, but we could have done this and no one would even know. But we did the right thing by going for the permit, but it just turned out to be a very, you know, tough, cumbersome process. But when we did complain to Jamie, we were able to get the meeting scheduled because Doug was supposed to come out, you know, the following Tuesday. And then she called and said, "Well," we didn't give him a frac. Well, you know, we appreciated that, but it was more of this squeaky wheel kind of thing unless we complained, you know, we got that. So we appreciate your time and, yeah, we definitely would like to set up a meeting with you, Bruce.
Kathy, great. Come see me, okay? Meeting tomorrow, actually. So if you'd come see me tomorrow. So if you'd come see me tomorrow, if you have that time.
So we could just stop in, or?
Yeah, just stop in. Say about 10 o'clock would be fine.
I didn't come very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks so much. Anybody else here?
No, we just answered.
Anybody else on public forum? Hey, anybody on the Addison Township Board reports? Nothing?
Nothing going on.
All right, anything from legal? Well, I guess we're down to the supervisors' report.
Communications.
Oh, do you have any communications?
Yes. Paul Hasner, who is here tonight, he wrote a letter to the board opposing additional fees for the Lake to Lake SAD. And that's on file for anyone to review.
Okay. I'll move on to supervisors' report. I was going to explain that if you saw in the consent agenda that tax the insurance was $52,493, but we are getting a asset revaluation of $36,396 back. So we insured the whole township, fire department, all the buildings, everything for $16,097. And the good news is, they said next year, I think, is going to be a really, really good year. As you remember, a few years ago, we insured the whole township for $3,000. So, next year, they advised me it's going to be even a better year. So, we've saved an awful lot out of our insurance. I'd also like to thank Phil Marshall and Mike McDonald, the village president. They helped put up a whole line of cabinets in the conference room on the other side there, and we're just waiting for a countertop. I'd also like to thank Rod Blazak and Charlie Perrinjian from the Parks. They put up the lighting for the sledding hill, so it comes on at night, so the kids have lights at night on the sledding hill. And last weekend was a bumper crop of kids out using the sledding hill, which is great to see the kids outside instead of in the video games. I will speak a little bit on the road right-of-way. We don't have control of the road right-of-way. That belongs to Oakland County. I have had everybody out there. I've had the engineers out there. I've had everybody out there. And it's in their legal department, and we don't have the jurisdiction. That's why our attorney has advised us that we don't have the jurisdiction on that. As far as the property line, we're not surveyors, only the circuit court. The law says only the circuit court can handle land disputes. That if you take a survey from one way and from the other way, there are going to be a couple feet difference. So, that's why they're always handled in a circuit court. So, we've advised them in several letters on that that they have to go through the proper procedures if they want to get those things resolved. Look for a motion for adjournment.
I'll take that motion.
I'll second.
You have a second? Any votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Next meeting is March 16th at 6 o'clock. Thank you very much.